Welcome, everybody, to our September. I got it September already. A little bit cooler weather right now, but great time to enjoy the season and be out in the village of Rhinebeck. I'd like to get started with our meeting and have everybody stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anybody here for public comment? Isabel, you're up first.
You want me to stand here?
I'll make sure this works where you go.
Okay. Improvements. I'm Isabel Schultze. I live at 104 East Market Street, and that's a state road. It's valuable for speeding tickets and therefore income, but it's nonetheless, the block that I live is dangerous. We have two or three significant accidents at each intersection, Parsonage and Mulberry, and then we have minor accidents and near accidents throughout the year. So I have three suggestions for the board. My significant accident, one happened last Sunday. Five minutes to midnight, a woman worked at one of the restaurants, was going home at the midnight speed, which is about 50 miles an hour, past my house, saw an animal crossing, swerved, rammed into a parked car at 98, shoved that car over the curb, almost to the sidewalk, broke the back axle, broke her car, the front, probably broke her nose, but she didn't want any medical attention. Fortunately, Ryan Connolly from the town fire department was going west, so he stopped and turned on the lights of his truck, and everything was handled. But we have that, two or three times, we've had fatalities. And so my three suggestions would be, first, to move the school sign from Mulberry Street, which was updated during COVID with modern signs, to the Parsonage intersection. Ask the state to do that. And then put in two stop signs, so that at Mulberry Street, it would be a four-way. There are already the side streets. My second suggestion would put everything related to streets, especially the two straight roads that we have, under the portfolio of the highway superintendent, because, including new curb cuts, for example, because the highway departments, they talk the same language, they have the same reference, and yet the village highway department can talk, knows our streets as nobody else knows them, and can also be apprised of our planning boards. I would have those two suggestions. And my third suggestion isn't mine, it was given to me by the state highway, is that the state highway would like a comprehensive review of all the streets of the village, so that they too get better oversight. I sincerely hope something will be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. As always, we do take safety very seriously, and thank you for your input.
Thank you. Nice of you to be here. Thank you.
Marie, you had your hand up?
At the last meeting, I asked if I could get a listing of the invoicing that's been done in the court case that I have against the village. I'm interested in knowing how much of the taxpayer dollars are being spent for lawyer's fees on the village's behalf. And Mr. Mayor suggested I foil request it. So here's my letter, my foil request. I tried to keep it under five pages. Thank you. I look forward to receiving the response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments for this evening? Yes, come on up.
My name is Caitlin Lightfoot. I live at 86 Livingston Street. These are my children Fiona and Hannah, the ones that I quit. Here tonight to request that a crosswalk and perhaps crossing lanes be included in the safe route to school, so that up on the corners of 308 where Parsonage crosses, as we live on the corner of Beach and Livingston, way at the east side of town, it would take my daughter out of her way to cross at Mulberry, the safe crossing. She would, she already takes 15 minutes to walk to middle school, and the only crosswalk is at Mulberry, where the church is. There's no crosswalk where the school is. I understand there are crosswalks planned for other locations, included in the grant. I don't know the specific details of that grant. I don't know whether lights are included, flashing lights, or whether crossing guards at the school crossing are included, but having recently become extra familiar with the situation, as the middle schoolers and high schools, the children exit the schools and enter the schools, there's absolute mayhem, and it's super uncomfortable for anyone driving because the kids are just filing out in all directions, and there are tons of cars exiting. I'm not sure that you're all familiar with this situation, as I know that it's been gone over in the past few years. I'm incredibly grateful for all the work that's been done on the safe route to school. I just have been recently familiar with the whole process, specific to my middle schooler crossing. And it's super uncomfortable for me as a parent to think of her going by herself. Right now, I'm not letting her walk by herself across 308, and in the future, I'd really love to be able to feel comfortable allowing my children to cross 308. I myself, as an adult, am uncomfortable crossing 308, as the speeding is intense, people are not at all aware of pedestrians, and even at crosswalks, it's really hard as a driver to see people at crosswalks, and I think lights are incredibly key and helpful, and certainly at the school, I think a crossing guard would be incredibly valuable. I'm really grateful for all of the work that you guys have done so far, to put all of the safe routes to school into place, and I'm hoping to just have this included. And I'm wondering if I could make an appointment with Mr. Loewitz, so that I can follow up on this situation.
Sure. We can talk about it, sure.
All right.
Yeah, this is, I mean, my kids, I live off the street from you.
Oh, really?
I'm Lori, yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
Right, so my kids have to cross the street, so I, I know, that's one of the first things I did when I, when I first got on the board, was like, let's put a crosswalk, a crosswalk.
Yeah.
I can tell you right now, unfortunately, the safe routes to school does not extend through that intersection. We will be working on the South Street and Parsonage Street intersection, and we are working to improve, I think I have to wait for the final scope, we've been working to improve the sidewalks on Parsonage, south of East Market Street.
Okay.
And if we're going to build, one of the things that we learned, if we're going to build a full crosswalk there, is we basically have to redo the sidewalks at the corners, because they have to become all ADA complying, and so it requires a fair amount of reconstruction. So at least having those two corners would get us halfway there towards a reconstruction. But for sure, this is something we've had our eye on for a while, and I'll, I can hear my phone number, we can talk.
Wonderful, I appreciate it. I know my daughter Fiona would like to chat as well.
I.
Can your name again?
Fiona Valentioli.
Do you want to pull my phone out? There you go. Thank you.
Fiona Valentioli. I have seen how fast people are driving across that road, and I think it would be much safer with a crosswalk, but it, there is no crosswalk, and that is very frustrating, I feel, because I want to be able to walk to school by myself. And I know that there is a crossing guard, because at the school, like, right there, because there's the road for parents to drop off their kids, but there's also this little, like, sidewalk bit by the bike rack, and there's a crossing guard at that crosswalk to get across to the mini park. I think that maybe it would be a good idea to at least have some sort of way for kids to safely cross from where I live. Since I live at the dead end of Livingston Street, Beach Street crosses over and leads to a main road, which is the easiest way to get to school from my house, and it is out of my way to go the safest route, and I believe that it would be a very good idea to add a crosswalk there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, Hannah also wants to say something, but she's gonna, are you gonna speak? Nope. She's chosen to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move into our purchase requests. I'm going to ask the board for permission to take E, which is a contract contingency for allowance charge for wastewater treatment plant up to the first, since we have Anthony here from Delaware Engineering. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Very good. Anthony?
As introduced, I'm Anthony Manthes, representing Delaware Engineering. We are the engineering firm that is managing the, when we manage the designing, they're currently managing the construction of the wastewater and water treatment plants. As the mayor mentioned, the topic of discussion right now is, there's an electrical proposal that we requested of the electrical contractor for the wastewater plant, for extra conduit, wire, and panel work to be performed for the UV disinfection system. When we put the project out to bid, we had two different disinfection units. One was Trojan, which is a Canadian product, and one, which was Glasgow, which is a US domestic product, their fabrication facilities are over in Jersey. The village decided to proceed with the latter for a few reasons, which have been discussed in prior meetings. Having said that, the electrical components between the two systems differ. The Trojan essentially has two control panels, which integrate both power and signaling for operation, whereas the Glasgow unit has two power centers, if you will, and one control panel in the middle. So that requires three panels instead of two, which increases the conduit amount, the wire amount, the terminations amount, the brackets amount, and miscellaneous work. So for that, we requested a proposal from the electrical contractor. They started out with $25,754, which we did not agree with that, so we reviewed the scope with them again, and after negotiations, we brought it down to $9,360, which we do recommend the village proceed with this, but we have to put it through the board's approval for the formalities of, the threshold being $5,000, correct?
Correct.
So this is not a contract increase, it is proposed to be charged with a contingency allowance. The contract has $30,000 worth of allowance, none of it has been used to date, and I'm open to your questions.
First, we'll get into, first, I'd like to make a motion to accept a $9,360 electrical charge for the Glasgow UV. Now we'll go into discussion.
So are you saying that somehow in midstream, we made a choice for the UV units, or what happened?
So, no, this is actually, before the award decision, is based off of bid alternates. So as the project was put out to bid, it represented either the Trojan or the Glasgow, and while making the award, the bills had the decision to decide on the preferred unit. So it's not a construction change, it's from the award. Having said that, on our end of the design, we're really able to account for the specifications of the product that are provided by the vendors, and we do not have, or did not have, prebid the specifications from the manufacturer. Oftentimes, they keep this information as proprietary for the competitors, and furthermore, there is a submittal and shop drawing process, and usually the vendors, unless they have a purchase order, they're not willing to provide the labor to produce these drawings for us. So we did have for Trojan, as it was a product that we had spec before, that was the basis of the design, and this costing proposal is for the delta between the two. So we're not going in assuming no conduit and wire, we're only talking about the extra conduit and wire and panels required between the two units.
But I'm trying to understand, so, so I'm trying to understand, originally, we picked a, we picked a unit, we picked a product.
Yes.
So then, shouldn't the contract have been for that product?
No, because that wasn't an alternate selection based on the general contract, and that price is, was clear. There was a dollar amount for the Trojan unit and a dollar amount for the Glasgow unit. On the electrical portion, which is not proprietary, we didn't tailor that until we know what unit we're proceeding with. So the basis design was the Trojan, and the excess required for the Glasgow was not part of the bid.
The last time we had a conversation about spending money on a contingency, you had a nice big chart.
Correct.
Greens and yellows and reds and all of the rest of it. That was mostly for the water treatment plant?
That was for the water treatment plant. I could produce something similar for the wastewater.
Yep.
But there's nothing.
Yeah, it's just one expense, and we weren't going through.
Exactly. There's nothing to tabulate, yes, because this would be the first expense.
This would be the first one. Okay. How, how are we doing? Are we optimistic? I mean, I know that the construction isn't going to end until, what, like, at least the spring?
I'm not very optimistic about meeting the construction times on the wastewater side. There were significant delays in the process of selecting the pumps, if we remember the flight pumps, right? So that delayed putting in purchase orders, and the purchase order had a lead time, I believe, late December, actually, 26th of December, day after Christmas, they're supposed to receive their units. I won't be surprised if that gets pushed into the new year.
Correct.
So there are delays on that end, but I don't think we have any specific hurdles. That will be as complicated as the water, because most of the ground, work is above ground, and it's usually in the ground where you find the unforeseen conditions and very facilities.
And most of the purchasing has taken place at this point?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, I mean, like, the point of me asking this question is, like, how much do you think we're going to be needing to rely on contingency between now and when the project is complete?
For the electrical scope, I don't expect to have to rely on more.
Okay.
For the general contractor's scope, we will get into more discussions, but that's mostly because there are certain requests, and it's probably premature to discuss right now, can get into detail, but there are certain requests from the operators of things they would like to add on to the plant or modify. But similar to how we had a credit and an adder on the water side, it'll be something similar for the wastewater.
Right, we're swapping out this for that, and so we might get a credit, or we might, yeah.
So I don't expect that either of these contracts upon closeout will be above their awarded amount. That's my anticipation.
Great.
The question is, as you said, am I going to swap this for that, and am I going to maximize?
Savings?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
It's mostly labor, it seems like, is the big, that's it.
It's labor and just conduit and wire.
Material was, labor was $5,867, and, and material was $2,763, so.
What I'll say is, if anybody just goes for a lockdown, some people in Lowe's right now, you'll see all the copper is caged and locked for a reason.
I guess I'm still a little bit baffled by this process, because generally, you know, I, I knew on the board, fairly knew on the board, and it just seemed like if I signed a contract, I was expected to adhere to it regardless, and the other person, I was hoping they would adhere to it, and usually they did, and I just find this constant escalating. I mean, I'm not just, this isn't the first, you know, just, we.
No, I understand.
We, you know, we get a bid, and then there's a change order, another change, and another change, and this isn't like, I understand if the operators ask for something else, and we agree to it, I clearly understand that, then we would be, you know, liable to pay the, I'm still just a bit baffled about this particular item here.
All in favor of supporting the change to use contingency of the $30,000 to, for the actual work for $9,360, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Karen.
Thank you.
Any other? Anthony?
Yes.
As I led into you before, how about just a brief update as well on where we are?
So I'll start with the wastewater, because it's much shorter. As I said, we're still waiting on equipment to be brought to the site. The submittals are behind us, we're past that phase, we have our purchase orders in, and we're just waiting to receive. There's very minimal site work actually included in the scope for the wastewater, but the little that there is, is already underway. They have, in August and late July, replaced the failing concrete around the final clarifiers of the oxidation ditch, so there was some concrete sidewalk done there, that's really the extent of work done at the wastewater. Whereas at the water plant, I can say there have been many steps taken. The contractor has completed deflocculation, tanks worked with the FRP baffles, same for the settling tanks, these are both unconventional filtration system, so those are complete. It's good to say the word "complete," right? Not in progress, complete. So on the new building, the foundation is in, and right now, they, today, they were pressure testing the piping that they put between the old building and the new. So that process piping passed its pressure test today, 150 PSI, two hours, that's great news as well. They put in their trench drains and catch basin, and we're ready to put in the reinforcement over the next couple of days, hopefully, maybe by the end of next week, if not the one after that, we'll have poured the slab, and we'll be working on erecting an actual building. When they pour that slab, they also want to pour degreesway between the two buildings. The reinforcement is already ready and tied there, it's already been inspected, and it's good. There has been process work done inside the existing building, the trident units that you have have already been through most of their rehabilitation, including sandblasting the coating and providing a new coating, the new underdrains, the new media. The only thing that's currently missing is on the instrumentation, which is pending completion of this GATA review or controls. The UV units have arrived on site, which is another long lead time item, so it's great to have those on site. They're currently installed, but they have not been started up, and we're to expect them to be in a while. There have been, there's been a great length of pipe installed in the lower gallery of the plant, the 8HDIPs to go to the new building and return, and to circum, to go around the high lift pumps, so many valves and lengths and fittings of pipe have been installed, including the new plant flow, effluent flow meter, which everything today has been paced off of the effluent flow meter. This is a problem, because every plant has wasting flow, and a lot of the flow that comes in doesn't necessarily make its way to distribution between backwashing or wasting and sludgeing. So it's always been part of the problem that the village has experienced in trying to monitor the flow and dose chemicals accordingly to maintain the proper residuals and not end up with, you know, disinfection byproducts, et cetera. So that's been installed, and it's a great feature for the plant, one that you haven't had for years, and will simplify things very much so moving forward. The potassium promethanate dosing station is also completely rehabbed, ready, flow meters are inside, solenoid valves, new tank, mixer, chemical dosing pumps, containment tanks, the works. And you've actually upgraded your safety features for your operators, and that feature, there used to be an IWA station, now it's a combination with a shower station in case you get any chemicals on you. So you're up to code. I think that's a, that's a good place to be for the wastewater, for the wastewater plant right now.
No questions?
Say it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is to accept a truck bid. We have TBW and Kyle Amy here to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. As you all are aware, we went out to bid for a used vehicle to replace the 2008 International that failed towards the end of last year, our snow plowing season. I sent everybody a description of that. Due to the fact of the year of the truck, and the cost, and the condition of the truck, we felt it was not worth putting 30,000 plus into it, right off the bat, to try to get it into the condition of lasting a few years. So we were able to put it to get through our needs of the summer and the rest of the winter of last year. As, as everybody knows what's going on, we've, we've gone back and forth looking for, you know, either a new truck or used trucks. New trucks are three-plus years out, if we wanted to replace it brand-new, and you're talking minimum cost of what we're looking at, just out of the gate, you're starting at $275,000. That's, that's without even putting a plow on it or any kind of sanding unit. So we looked around and spoke to dealers and everything, and we, we thought we'd put out the bid for a used vehicle. That would be sufficient for the operations of this village, which we did. We did get a return back for a 2016 Mack plow truck for $140,000, which only has 12,910 miles on it, which is equipped with an Allison auto transmission, air brakes, differential locks, 10-inch dump, and also comes with a 12-foot plow, which is equivalent to the truck that we're replacing right now. I know we've talked about the vehicle in regards to sizes and where we should go moving forward. We will, I will tell you that we will be able to utilize the larger truck, especially the stuff that we're hauling, especially what we've taken on with our scope with doing our own digs, as far as catch basins, water drains, and so forth, with the items that we need to carry. It also will come in handy with picking up the village streets even quicker and getting things done, especially when we start getting to the fall area. So we, as myself and John Kraft, would like to accept the 2016 truck for a purchase, and I know the question will come is, how are we going to purchase this? I had Karen go out and get three quotes in regards to the government leasing, which, as everybody knows, we've done the government leasing in the past for police and fire vehicles, which will give us an opportunity of, by signing the lease agreement, we will not have to make the. to make the payment until one year after signing. So it gives us time to make sure we're well within the budget and moving forward to, to go ahead with this. It is a five-year lease. We were able to find a lease rate at 4.74. The other lease rates were 5.36 and 5.50. Just to backtrack a little bit, this truck's location is out in Wisconsin.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question.
So we did, we did get three pricing, three other pricing to have it shipped here. So that price that, that we got after getting three prices was $3,043. The next price was $4,284, and then it was $4,716. So we did base on the lease agreement for $145,000, which would be able to cover the transport. It also would be able to cover any fees that we need to do as far as motor vehicle when it gets here, and it will definitely cover any of the lettering that we need to do as soon as that truck arrives. It does come with emergency lighting already, so we don't have to worry about that. If anybody's asking the question, why this truck with such low miles, it was basically, there was kind of a municipality that was the opposite of us. They, the truck was too small for them, so they went there. They will give us a 90-day warranty on the truck as soon as we accept the delivery of it.
So you'll run it through, like, the wringer and have everybody look at it and make sure that it's?
Yeah, we've done, we, we, as soon as Susie's came in, we've been virtual with, with the dealership, we pretty much have gone through the motor. And again, you know, it's a 90-day, you know, warranty. Like I said, we, we did look at the option of sending a couple guys out to pick it up, it just wasn't feasible enough. And the honest way, they'd rather have them here.
Working.
Correct. So.
Is this a CDL truck?
Yes, it is a CDL truck.
Okay.
So with that being said, obviously with the mayor's control, I would like to see the board move forward with this purchase, with the lease, and the lease be in total at 140, 145, which will give us an annual payment of $33,251.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second motion. Any other discussion?
Just out of curiosity, where would that put us in terms of size? Is it like, would it be our biggest plow or the second biggest?
No, the biggest plow truck we have right now is Scott Min's truck that has the plow and a wing. And obviously with, with that truck moving forward, we'll be going down again.
Kyle, I think it'd be worth explaining to those who don't know, the limitations we have with our big truck.
Yes, one of the, one of the limitations we have with the big truck that we have with Scott is the way the sanding system is built into the bed, which does not allow us to do a hauling of blacktop, which then makes a problem because with the 5500s that, non-CDLs, we can't take the chance of putting that, those type of items in, especially coming off the bridge with DOT. We can't put our guys into chancing that. And again, with the item four that we're hauling and other products that, and, and so forth, with after doing these digs, we do need a CDL truck. This truck is designed where, yes, it has a built-in sander, but it's based on gravity, and it's a rear sander, which is a lot better action, or a lot better sander than we had with the truck we sold less than a year ago. So we're comfortable that this truck will, will be, you know, Tom's, Tom's truck has definitely been utilized and been an asset, and that's why we want to keep it within that size of the vehicle.
I think it's also for the board to know that we're going to keep using the existing truck until it does.
Yes.
Right. So we put money into rebuilding the engine?
Yep.
And let's just keep using?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to run that truck until it doesn't run anymore.
Any other questions?
Just a formality, do we have to worry about two other bids for the truck?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have to worry about two other bids for the truck?
We put out for an RFP.
We put an RFP in this one.
This is the only one that showed up.
All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor of accepting the truck bid for lease price at $145,000 at 4.74%, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Board, and I will get for, with Karen tomorrow, and we'll work out the details going forward. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? Not you, Pat, you're okay. We spoke about paying off some of our more higher interest leases as part of, like, fun balance conversation. I'd, I'd like to not lose track of that conversation because we just approved a lease at 4.74, and we've got, you know, we've got leases at 7.49, 5.94, 5.57. So I just want to.
I'd like to put that on the agenda whenever you would like.
Okay. Yeah, maybe whenever. Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, moving forward. Next is pruning bids. At the last meeting, we went out for a bid for two things. One, for the locust trees on East Market Street. There are many branches in those trees that are dead and are hanging by a string, and I mean literally hanging by a string.
By a white string.
Also the branch, there's a lot of branches that are, you know, next to buildings that could, could be dangerous. So we put out a bid for that, and we also put out a bid for doing the same work at the mini park. We did get two bids back. The first bid back was from New England Property Maintenance for the village streets on East Market Street. That total was $29,325 for 51 locust trees. At the mini park, it was $10,000 to go around and do the dangerous branches and et cetera. The second bid we got was from Dave's Tree Service for East Market Street to do the same work, remove the dangerous dead wood, cut back and clear from buildings, et cetera. Like I mentioned, the 50 for 51 trees, it's $5,000. That will also include removing all the busted and broken holiday lights that have been hanging in these trees, which are currently holding up some of the branches, and test the remaining lights that are on there so we know what's working and what's not working. So that he, work is not, is doing for gratis for the village, as he has done so many times before. So that's $5,000 for that, and for the mini park, to do the same work, to safety pruning, raise and remove all dangerous dead wood, et cetera, was $950. I'd like to make a motion to accept the bids from Dave's Tree Service of $5,000 and $950 to do the work on our street trees and in the mini park to be done this month before all the leaves fall.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, a question. How come the property owners in downtown don't pay for the pruning of the trees and for their properties as happens elsewhere?
Very, that's a very good question, because these trees, given their history and heredity and whatever, the village has always maintained these trees. Like new trees that are going, that were put in where, on, on 308, where Montgomery Road is, they, the property owners have now started taking over ownership of those. But these have been built a long time, and we have a history of doing that.
You mean on Montgomery?
On, yeah, on Montgomery. But we're, we've been, we've been responsible, and this has now become a hazardous situation where we need to get it cleaned up. A good question.
This is actually, oh, oh. This sort of like begs the conversation a little bit about like, you know, downtown sidewalks, downtown trees, you know, it's, there, there's a little bit of like a, it's not written, it's sort of history and, you know, how we've always handled it, but it would be nice to figure out a way to kind of document, like, you know, we ask our property owners mostly to take care of the trees, but not there, and that, like, I mean, I understand why, but at the same time, like, it's confusing. It's confusing for residents, it's confusing for property owners.
So that's not written in the code anywhere?
No, no.
I think it was something that was ad hoc a long time ago.
Yeah, okay. You know, and like historically, the Chamber of Commerce has helped with this, and, you know, so I think there's an opportunity here to engage with the business community, and frankly, this morphs quite nicely into the second thing that I wanted to say was, you know, Dave Hughes has always been a tremendous asset to the village, he's been a tremendous partner. He's an extraordinary business owner in the way that he sort of works with, with, you know, in public service. And this is like a laughable, I mean, like, I'm delighted, but like, this is the kind of quote that I get to take out a single tree in my back garden. So, you know, I just want to express that, you know, this particular business owner, you know, really does go above and beyond to partner with the village to help us out, and I don't want that to go unacknowledged. But I do really think that there's an opportunity here to sort of engage with the business community writ large about how to handle sort of this downtown area a little bit. They do take care of their sidewalks, but this tree conversation is a different issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have one question. Is this coming out of the playgrounds, the 71?
No, for the, for the park, yes, it's coming out of playground and 950. For the 5,000, we said that would come out of streets.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is, a little bit more involved, discussion on upgrading our existing phone systems here, here across all of our buildings and all of our sites. Over the past month, Martina and I have been putting in a lot of work, reaching out to talk to various contractors and suppliers to upgrade our existing phone system. Our existing phone system was put in last in 2017. It is the traditional phone system where it runs on wires running through the building, copper wires that connect all of our phones together. It has a lot of limitations compared to today's offerings that we can get. In other words, for instance, if I want to call a police department, that's right there, I have to go to an outside line to call the police department, there, and there's no way to do it. If I want to call, you know, any of the outbuildings, whether it's water, wastewater, or highway, we dial outside lines. We don't have conference capability, we don't have the ability for trustees to really conveniently receive calls, or myself to receive calls and to return calls that don't come from our own personal cells, because we don't have the lease phones, we all use our own personal cells. Upgrading the system gives us all the ability to return calls on various platforms, whether it be a computer, a cell phone, or an existing phone somewhere, and have it look like it's coming from a village number and not using our own personal numbers for all of this. It's really the way business should work and a lot of, so there's a lot of savings and a lot of features that we could get going forward that would increase our communication, not only to the public, but to internally, especially for us to be able to do that. So what we asked for from each supplier was a voice-over IP. A voice-over IP is, that means we're using our existing internet structure. So the cable that comes to everybody's desktop in their office right now, it's, gets plugged into the phone, and then from the phone, it gets plugged into your computer, and they all work together, and we don't have to do any additional wiring because we all have desktops in our phone, in, in our offices, at our buildings, we all have desktops out at our outside buildings, and this, in the police station, it's the same over there. The other advantage is this consolidates everything into one platform. Today, we have currently two primary cell phone service companies. One is Spectrum, which is Charter Communication, the other is Frontier, that we handle individually. They're not on one platform, we pay police, we pay Billy Chau, we pay water, we pay wastewater, and we separate these costs, which is fine, but we don't get the advantage of having it all in one package where we can get cost reduction by pulling it all together. So for instance, Charter Communication, monthly, we currently pay $345, $345.04 for those phones. For Frontier, we pay monthly $2,347.
Good.
For phone service, that's services, our village garage, our fire department, our coach, our courts, our fax lines, and all of our outside buildings. We've been able to go out and interview four suppliers. Our current company, which is, which is Superior, came in, and with the voice-over IP system, we, I said, we get a lot of advantages and features that go with that. One of the big features that also comes with it, there's not the traditional service that we need. We don't have, today we have a bank of hardware in the basement, a PBX box and all sorts of other communication boxes that are used to handle this. When they fail, we're down for a length of time until we fail. Voice-over IP, we eliminate all of that GORP that's on, on the wall downstairs, and everything's handled over the internet. We get an admin dashboard, that dashboard that enables us to be able to control and move phones and change phones, and if your phone's out, swap you to another phone or whatever, so you don't miss any calls. We get backup recording, we get voice messaging on all our devices, et cetera, et cetera, go on and on. Superior came in, they have a month-to-month contract for voice-over IP, so if we don't like them next month, we can say goodbye, all right? But what we do, there is a caveat to that, because it comes with, we, all of these contracts are bill, we're at the end of the contract, we get a phone. Superior runs with the state bid process. They're the only one that is on OGS, so when they go forward with a bid, it is a state bid. State bid requires them to break things out differently than what some of the other suppliers do who are not on state bid. So what we get is, at the end of the one year on the state bid, we now own the phones, one year. And if you have to replace a phone after that, the average price of the phone that we would get from them was $140. So it's not a huge update if something does break after that outside the warranty. But their cost per month was $786. That's, that's total service call for however long you want to keep them. But they do have a $5,688 one-time, what they call the white glove treatment, to be able to come in and train us, set us up, make sure everything's working, and they don't leave until everybody gives it a nod, all right? So that's, the way they have to break it out, that's due to OGS, the state system bid, where they're not allowed to bundle things in together, which you kind of can see from the other bids. We're kind of paying the same amount, but it's being bundled, if you amortize the $5,688 over a three-year period, it's like $150 per month added on to the cost over the three years, so you end up with about the same price over, over, over that time. Second was Archtop. Archtop is our current internet supplier, this is the backbone that all the phones would be running on in our system today, whether it be the police building, or our building, or our outbuildings. That was a three-year contract, their service, their cost per month was $1,533.79. There's no monthly service fee, and there's no one-time setup fee. Spectrum came in with a three-year contract as well for $923.54 a month, no monthly service fee and a one-time fee for setup. PCA gave us two offers. One was a five-year contract, they broke it up as well, $5.60, $60.57 for the phone lease per month, and $5.15.72 for service per month. So they break the two things out for, for service, and there was no one-time fee. PCA also offered us a purchase price. We could tomorrow buy the phones for $23,021.48. We would own them, but we'd then pay a monthly service fee of $515.72. A lot to take in, but there's a lot. We did budget for this within our, within our budget while we went through to be able to cover this cost. As you can see, there's a significant savings, no matter who we go with, there's a significant savings that we would obtain through consolidating this and streamlining our business. We streamlined our internet, we had cost savings, we streamlined our internet. My goal here is to streamline our phone system, get everybody on the same platform, so we can communicate, and when there's a problem, we can fix it easily and use a voice-over IP system. Rather than making a motion right now, I'm going to open it up for discussion because I think it deserves discussion first.
One question, so I, we've had some discussions back and forth between two of us. Superior is in the business phone business, that's their business?
That's their only business ever?
That's their business, okay. Do we have any contracts with them currently?
We are currently, we have been with Superior.
Okay. And how do we feel like their service has been to us?
Again, we had a $923 per year service arrangement, but it was a very limited arrangement that we put in in 2017. So it covered some very basic things in terms of doing it, so every time they came in, it was, turned, really turned out to be available, it was a hardware item downstairs or something that wasn't covered under that, that service agreement. It was a hardware item downstairs or something that wasn't covered under that service agreement.
How do we feel about the response times and that kind of stuff?
I wasn't that pleased, to be honest with you. But having, sitting down and talking to them, and the changeover to voice over IP eliminates the issues that we were having with Superior for maintaining a hardware infrastructure. And that cost was really driven, the issues we had was maintaining that hardware infrastructure, which was somewhat old down there. I don't know how many people get down into the basement and look at our wall of equipment.
Try to avoid it, actually.
There's, there's, there's stuff dating back there to before we were all born.
Right.
Right? That's still, that's still being used, and this eliminates a lot of that. So my, my point here is, I don't want to compare. It's not comparing apples to apples because we're going for it with something new, which is voice over IP, which eliminates a lot of those issues. But, good question.
So I, I did some quick math, just to like, over the course of three years, and I know that some of these contracts are for five, and some of them are monthly, and blah, 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 but let's just say like, we just had all of them for three years. Archtop is by far and away the most expensive. PCA purchase comes in a hot second. And then PCA lease comes in third. And then Superior and Spectrum are sort of like keith-keith over three years.
But if you do it over five years, I found that Superior, Spectrum, and the buy the phones now from PCA are pretty equivalent, so it would be, but I did the five. The only thing about the PCA, which we didn't budget to buy $23,000 unfortunately, because if we did that, at least we would know that price is in for five years. The others, we don't know. I don't know about the monthly. Does that mean that they could raise it two months from now?
No, this is a contract price.
Forever?
So for Superior, $786, it's forever as long as we decide to keep them.
Really?
Yep. Even though it's month-to-month, they will stick to that price every month until we say we want to terminate our agreement.
Or we change it? I mean, if we say like...
If we change it, then we're phones.
Right.
That's right. You know, don't, this is for this equipment.
No, 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 exactly. No, no, I was talking about the trigger, no, what the trigger, what triggers, like, we sneeze, and they're like, you're contracted.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
When you get down to, under the covers of all these, it's all the same. I mean, whether you go with Superior, Archtop, Spectrum, PCA, the feature function that they all offer is very much equivalent. They call it a different name. They call one Eleanor, and they call the other one Lydia, you know, and whatever. And so, so you get the same function from, no matter who you go with, to be able to do this.
Got it.
Well, I would say the Archtop and the PCA, five-year, not the buy-in advance, I mean, that's still pretty high. So if we don't want to do the $23,000, it would be between Spectrum and Superior then.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, that, the math of that, yeah.
Let's go beyond math a little bit.
Yep.
Which we were talking about. If you go with Superior, this is a discussion I've had with some of you, as Rick just mentioned, that's the only job, that's the only thing they do. They do telephones.
Right.
Right? If you go with Archtop, right, so if you make a backup, you make a call, and it's not a, since we're using voice over IP...
But it's not an internet issue.
If it's not an internet issue, they got it. If it's an internet issue, then you've got to wait till they do their thing to get down to now calling Archtop, say, hey, we have an internet issue. Right? To be able to, whether that's a big deal or not, don't worry, say. Archtop, one call, one-stop shopping. Right? But you're going to pay, you're going to pay more.
Way more. Yeah, just more, way more.
Right. And I'm just giving, I'm not talking dollars, I'm talking about...
Yeah, yeah.
What, outside of that service.
Yeah.
Right? Spectrum, they're into everything. They are, they're literally, whatever you want to game, you want to play, they're going to do it. They'll stream, they'll stream to your, the phone in your shoe.
Right.
Right? If they, if you want, if you want them to. So they, they really are in that business to do it. Quite honestly, we've been in with Spectrum for a long time. And eliminating Spectrum and going to Archtop was an ordeal, trying to figure out all the pieces and parts that we have existing in this building and where they are. We uncovered that we still have a Spectrum contract after we still tried to get rid of Spectrum contract, but it's related to our phone systems, which...
Right.
We needed to maintain. So, you know, and PCA, again, their main business is computer, computer service. They do offer a telephone service. They do have good reputation in terms of their telephone system. It's, I am, I'll be honest with you, right now, I'm torn. I'm torn between Superior, PCA, and Archtop. And if I would eliminate Archtop, the only reason is because I like one-stop shopping, I got a problem, I call you, and you fix it. Right? And they're going to be here now, they're not going to be here tomorrow.
Right.
Right? They're, they are responsive enough to come. Superior, we've had delays with them coming when we've had a problem.
I wasn't here for the last storm, so I can't speak to it, but ordinarily, it is generally easy enough to call them up. It's the same person.
Right. Cheryl is very good.
We have an account manager.
Right. We have an account manager that runs it. So, again, we're on a different platform. They can get on, on our desktop from wherever they are, and they have more admin, everybody has more admin than what we would have, right? In that admin desktop and backup of that. So we would have basically two administrators of this desktop that would be on our, on the computer. One would be to my right, Martina. She would be what I'd call a super user on our telephone system. And the other one would be Danielle because of the police. We do a lot of shuffling with phones, and we would be able to do that. Danielle would also be a super user to, to be able to do that. So I'm confident in the fact that a lot of the issues that we would, would have would be resolved here internally because we can, we have that capability. And if we call somebody, they're on, they're on a computer fixing it right away, and we don't have to wait for them to come here. I'm just going to put, I'm going to be as transparent as I possibly could. When I started out with Superior, given our history, I was somewhat skeptical. But they came in, and they really, really, Martina will back me up on this, they came in and demonstrated a good product, a good platform, and a solid company to work with. Right? Archtop, quite honestly, did the exact same thing, to call, their issue, issue is cost. Spectrum...
But I mean, even Archtop, even the Archtop price is significantly less than what we're currently paying.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. And that doesn't mean that we, you know, shouldn't keep looking for savings, but no matter what, any of these contracts are significantly less than what we're currently paying.
So if we did the Superior, then we would give, have to give 30-day notice, or...
We're already with Superior.
No, I mean, if we, if we decided, let's say we decided then to switch to...
No, their date switches tomorrow. Our contract, by the way, so, the reason we don't is because our contract expired in August with them.
Well, I mean, I, then maybe we should just try Superior if we're not satisfied.
Yes, because this needs a month if they, if they work out.
I mean, I did a quick, a quick calculation. If we did Superior for a year, including the fee and their cost per month, that's $1,260, that would be $1,260 a month if we only, if we did it for one year. So let's say that would be like our worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Like, we kept it for one year, and we're like, no, this really stinks, we don't like them. And that's not far off where the PCA cost would be. Looks like about $100. So I, my feeling is that this is Superior's business. If we feel like we're more comfortable with their ability to administer the pieces, I think they're, they're worth a shot. And if we do have, and I would say we give it a year, if we haven't, we don't like it within the year, then we haven't overpaid, or we paid a bit more, but I think we've learned a good lesson. If we like it, we're way ahead.
Well, just to put all the cards on the table, you own those phones after a year.
The Superior phones?
The Superior, we own.
Right?
Right. Well, switching to another platform, not all platforms use the same phones.
Oh.
Right? So one uses phone X, the other uses phone Y, because that's what integrates with their phone, with your platform.
Got it.
So there is an issue when you, when you get into it. But again, to Superior's advantage, they want to succeed because we're on a month-to-month contract with them. They, they don't want us to call them up and say, get out of here. Right? That's one of the reasons they do a monthly, to be able to have that advantage to do that.
And we did budget 12, we have a budget line of $12,000 for this changeover.
Correct. That was just for the changeover. We also already budgeted for phone service in all of the...
At current rates.
At current rates. So we are saving significantly here because we're not going to be using the $12,000 to do the changeover. We're going to use, if, if we could use some of it, you know, to do it, but we would have additional savings. And additional savings in the month-to-month that we have for all the other ones. I will admit, there's some things that I did miss. The pump house up on Hylee, I got to go figure out how to add that pump house back in because I missed that when we were, when we were doing our counting of, of phones. But, so, these are quotes that we get that we'll turn over to contracts, but the final contract, there may be, well, we decide that Lydia doesn't want the app on her phone, so we're going to save because, or we, maybe we don't want to give Lydia the app on her phone, or maybe we'll save money from, from that aspect of it. All right? Or Rick doesn't want it, or whatever, you know, kind of thing, we could, so there's going to be some changes going forward as we truly deep dive into finalize it and then make those changes. But they're going to be small in terms of the adjustment.
Okay. So what do you need? Do you need like...
We need to make a motion to go forward to contract.
Just to pick and then...
I'd like to make a...
And then come back with the exact contract.
Pardon?
Make a motion just to pick the vendor, and then he would come back with the exact contract when it's all lined up?
Oh, that will come during implementation. So we really got to get them in here to implement. So if we make the motion, we're going to call them and say, listen, start deploying phones, start setting up, start doing it, start rolling it out, and we're going to, it's like, our wastewater, our water department, we're going to find things when you start rebuilding the covers.
Now, we're not going to swap.
Just like I found when we were trying to streamline our internet service, we found things that we, they've been in existence here since forever, but we didn't know about it. So there's going to be some unknowns. So I'd rather say not come back to the contract, because I really got to get into implementation to uncover these things. I'm going to save the cost.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to go forward with Superior. Yeah.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Superior it is.
Thank you for all that work. Yeah. Big project.
And to rationalize that effort all these years is very impressive.
Yes.
Well, it's the debug time that takes the time.
Right.
All right, next on the agenda is seasonal street tree lighting. I sent you all an, I sent you all an email a while back. The Holiday Tree Lighting Committee is defunct. Right? They're no longer in existence. The, we is, a little bit of history, the Chamber used to do the tree lighting on East Market Street and Montgomery Street for us, and then they got out of the business. We picked it up for a couple of years and, and ran that, and then the Holiday Tree Lighting Committee came along and said, we would like to take it over, and they wanted to make a larger event of putting in the tree lighting plus all of the other events they were trying to do. But that...
Lasted like years.
Didn't last. There's one tradition that I don't want to see go away, and that is the lighting of our street trees during the holiday season. I believe that's an attraction for a lot of people and that supports our business community as well, to be able to have that and people comment, coming to Rhinebeck to enjoy shopping, especially in a light snowfall, at, when it's dark, and you can walk through the streets and enjoy the ambiance that the Village of Rhinebeck delivers that nobody else can. So...
And not just for shoppers, I think those of us who live here...
I love it.
And in a deep, dark winter, it really makes things look happier.
So we're looking at this going away. Right? If we, if nothing is done, this will disappear. And as you saw this year, some of the lights stayed on all year. That's something I don't like as well. I like to have those lights go out.
Yeah.
And so we make a big difference during the season, and we would be able to manage it. So along with doing that, I'm probably making a plea to say, hey, guys, I want to keep this tradition alive, and I want to be able to go out and do the holiday street lighting. So I worked with the Holiday Tree Lighting Committee. They have a lot of lights left over that they are donating to the village if we so choose to want to do it. We did a count of what we need. We determined that we needed 42 more boxes of lights to be able to finish doing all the lighting. That comes to $658 for us to spend, which we didn't budget for, but it's $658 that we would need to spend to buy those 42 boxes. And the issue is, who does the work? I, for one, am not going to climb the trees anymore and, and wrap those tree lights. We're only wrapping the tree trunks anymore, so not the branches, but Dave's Tree Service, as you saw in the previous bid, is going to do us a tremendous favor by removing all the lights that are above the trunk and testing what is already there. Dave has also offered to install the new Holiday Tree Lighting for us.
Wow.
For gratis for the Village of Rhinebeck, because he also doesn't want to see this tradition go away. So I'm really appreciative of Dave's Tree Service, who has done this for many years, to continue helping us this tradition. So I'd like your approval for the village, I'd like to make a motion for the village to take over just a portion of the seasonal tree lighting, which is the lights on East Market, West Market, on Montgomery, in front, in front of the stores. That portion of it does not include, I'm going to be very clear, but does not include running an event in the municipal parking lot. It does not include bringing Santa to town, right, or any of those kinds of traditional things that the Holiday Tree Lighting Committee was doing, or the Chamber was doing in the past. There may be other people that would want to pick that up, but from a village perspective and keeping this village vibrant during the winter season, when it's dark and gloomy from 4:00 to 8:00 the next morning, I would like to make a motion that we take over responsibility for the seasonal street tree lighting for this year.
Second.
Okay, there is one component of this which has always been a great concern to the tree commission, which is that the lights should come off in the springtime, that they really should be installed and removed annually because they potentially can girdle and the trees. And that's always something we've kind of always had that problem with, with the old committees, who was going to be responsible. Is it your vision that we will now finally do, take it out, remove every year? That would be the most healthy thing for the trees.
I think you and I have a different opinion based on who we spoke to, because I did speak to Meg in the past on this. Especially when we made the motion to remove them from the tops of the trees, more comfortable with that. To the trunks.
Right.
Very much more comfortable with saving and keeping them in the trunk, and she was also comfortable with leaving them on the trunks.
Okay, that's news to me.
So if she's changed her opinion, that is not, that's new news to me.
Okay, that was her old opinion, as far as I know.
That was kind of like last year's opinion.
Okay, that's the last time I talked to her about it.
Yeah. So if she wants to move, this is not included removing the lights. It does not.
Okay. And the other thing about it is that, from a tree point of view, it might be healthier if the lights went out at a certain time at night, and the reason why I say this is to get a little technical. The lights are warm, and they compromise the tree's ability to adapt to the cold.
One of the reasons we switched LED.
Right, right, which is why I have them. So maybe like after 1:00 in the morning or something.
So, Rick, I love that suggestion, but there's no way we can do that. You know, you know how we string these lights?
We plug them in the...
We plug them into departments. We plug them into apartments, into stores.
Right.
We plug them, we connect them to multiple chains of extension cords.
Yeah. Don't tell the fire chief.
We don't have, no, I mean, no. We do not have the ability to do that.
To do that, okay. But I, those, but I know that from the tree commission, those are some of the long-running questions or, you know, issues that we have. are some of the long-running questions or, you know, issues that we have. And I will double check about the trunks.
I would, I would challenge you to go and bet something that you can put into the light that will turn it off.
Well, they do have, but we'd have to buy another 42 timer boxes.
A lot, yeah.
I understand. I wanted to surface it because it's out there.
Thank you for representing the tree. Any other questions? All right, all in favor of saving the seasonal street tree lighting for the village of Rhinebeck and making this a vibrant community for not only the residents but our businesses, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Karen. All right.
Okay.
Karen.
All right, the treasures report is for the period ending August 31st. The general fund ended the month with $24,670.25. The water fund ended the month with $190,704.06. And the sewer fund ended the month with $145,420.97. Vouchers presented for payment to include prepaid's in the general fund totaled $74,480.71. In the water fund, $52,853.41. In the sewer fund, $30,411.55. In the compost facility, $1,521.18. In the water treatment plant upgrade project, $1,016,780.64. And wastewater treatment plant, $755.72.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the-
Pay the bills.
The tolls.
To accept the vouchers.
Exactly, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just to make, Karen, I'd like to make a comment, Joe, just on the wastewater treatment and sewage improvements. The reason that number is so low compared to the highway is we're drawing off of a loan, correct?
Correct.
Also, I did catch Anthony out in the hallway, and we are waiting on payment from EFC, but EFC's engineers are reviewing it, so he's going to contact them. But we do have about $120,000 bill waiting for the wastewater treatment.
Thank you.
Okay, monthly operating statement is provided with revenue expenditures through September 9th. Water and sewer, September monthly bills went out $38,742.33 for the water, $42,607.41 for the sewer, and those are due September 25th. Adjustments were signed up by Mayor Bassett and presented for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly operating statements.
Second.
Including the year adjustments.
Gary, did you vote for the last one?
We did not. We'll do it, we'll do it with this, okay? Did I have a second? Somebody second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of accepting the vouchers and the water operating statement adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I have one budget amendment, and it is just to allocate the Frost Grant for the speed trailers in the amount of $13,924.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the budget amendment, say aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Vanessa, you're up.
Okay. All right, guys. This is going to be a discussion. So what I brought to the board is a contract for the $600,000 Energy Efficiency and Conservation block grant. This is $600,000 or 603,000. Match rate, this is through NYSERDA. The money will be used for the upgrading this building. So any energy efficiency, oh, thank you, energy efficiency or HVAC work on this building. Here's, here's the catch. This is money that the federal government had tried to claw back because it's Department of Energy. NYSERDA sued, I know, I knew Lydia, this, I knew this would be your reaction. So NYSERDA sued, got the money reinstated, right? But there's still, like, in the court, circuit court or whatever, there's still some back and forth happening. So we are one of five municipalities in all of New York State that has been awarded this money, which I consider a real privilege.
Yeah, amazing.
But our decision really is about how much risk do we feel like taking on the risk of doing this project, given that the federal government could pull some shenanigans?
Given that Donald Trump doesn't believe in the Constitution? What? Yes, okay, great, thank you.
So, so what NYSERDA is trying, what the NYSERDA lawyers have tried to do with this contract, this agreement with us, is say that we would be able to invoice as we go on the project. It is a reimbursement grant. It's match free, but it's a reimbursement grant. So what they're saying is so that you're not out on your skis too much with paying for this project and then hung out to dry, if the rub gets pulled out from under us, see how many colloquialisms I can use. So basically, they say you can invoice as you go, and, and then they go and invoice, the feds, they get reimbursed, they pass the money to us. They're saying lickety-split. So that's, like, do we, do we feel comfortable with that?
How long is lickety-split?
So they said that we can invoice them, like, once a week. And then in the contract, if you look at their terms, it says they have no more than 30 days to pass the money back.
Why don't we do like a small little piece of it and just so we can see what the timing, what the turnaround time, I mean, is going to be a good place.
Tell them what the first piece is.
Right. So the other kind of catch here is that the terms of the agreement really require that we do an energy study phase, they're calling it audit phase, again, which we've already done, but they want a passive house certified consultant on that piece of the project. So in 20, this is 2023, we had an energy study, Flex Tech, energy study done with NYSERDA's help. So what I'm asking is, like, maybe we can use that study, if the requirements that flow up to the federal government are saying, well, you need a passive house, you need the passive house lens to look at this project, maybe we just bring on like a passive house certified consultant to review all the work that's already been done and add additional commentary or recommendations. So there might be a way to kind of not just, you know, lose all that work that's already been done, but actually build upon it. But, so that first phase, which needs to be done by the end of December, yeah, the other catch here is, is the timing. Because this whole project was caught up in the back and forth between New York State and the feds, they lost a lot of time. So now the time constraint is we have to have that phase one done by the end of the year, and then any implementation projects that we want to actually do would have to be done before this time next year. So, but here's what we're talking about.
We knew, we knew that going in.
Yeah.
Right, so that-
Like, if I'm optimistic, we can pull it off, like, it's going to take enough, it's going to take-
If we need equipment, though, is there like lead time? I'm sorry, you know, we have to get like some, some kind of units outside, and it's got six-month lead time.
I think the name of the game will be, what can we actually get our hands on and install?
Okay, so we'll do it that way.
Up to $600,000, $700,000 that we can actually accomplish within a timeframe. And so it's not going to be my dream of a complete makeover of the HVAC system. It might be replacing the bay, the bay doors so that they're more efficient and tight. It could be putting in some more insulation. It could be kind of a piecemeal thing, but here's $600,000 of those match rate.
I wouldn't throw away the HVAC system because that is still possible to do. We know what we need. We've already got that defined with the Flex Tech study of how we would deploy that here in the village. And so we, once we get this passive audit done, we get it done quickly, we could move forward and make, because our vessel, which is our furnace in the basement, the octopus down there with many arms that we throw stuff into.
Right, exactly.
You know, is on it, is on it, is, can last, but it's original. And so we need to replace that unit downstairs. And I would make that the number one priority, to be able to try to do it if we can.
If we can.
If we can get everything lined up to, to do it. And it's going to take a lot of work, but we have a lot of experience. We've done the police department, we've done the water department, we kind of know what we're, and we have a design done here. So.
Does the audit come out of the $600,000?
Yes, it does. And if we can't get any savings, Eleanor, that audit could cost $100,000 of the $600,000, right? So it's a matter of getting the right passive audit consultant person in here, demonstrating what we have, and try to get buy-in to expedite it and also kind of helpfully reduce the cost.
Is NYSERDA going to help you kind of identify a good, like, a good company for that, or?
There, there's like the Passive House Institute with like, you know, lists of certified people. I think it's just an error finding someone who wants to do this project under such a tight deadline.
And who's willing to like take the work that we've already done and?
Yeah. So it's, it's, yeah, it's a bit complicated because we're not starting from scratch. We're under this tight deadline.
Right.
You know, I'm willing to do the work, thank you, but I, I think it's obviously it's a really important forward decision.
If we have to go out, one of the-
I can answer just a few questions if you'd like.
All right, could you hold for a minute?
Yeah.
That'd be great. One of the few things we need to worry about is going out for an RFP, because if you go out for an RFP, you put 30 days on it, whatever. Now, you know, for that passive house audit, we're really starting to get constrained on time again. So we need to figure out a way to expedite this and turn it quickly. And so by making contacts and doing everything, it's possible that, you know, if we figure out a way, we can maybe expedite the process.
Okay. I mean, if, if we vote to sign the contract with NYSERDA, we still have to wait for NYSERDA to countersign before we can move forward. But what I'm asking for, but they are also like, they-
Okay.
They, you know, they're like-
This is like not normal state contracting.
Right, they're like, let's talk to-
Okay, great.
They wanted us to sign this a week, two weeks ago.
Okay, got it.
So-
And we had to wait to the meeting.
Yeah.
So we've got the contract. I've put together an RFP, and I, I hope it's, like, if, if NYSERDA gets back to me and is like, oh, actually, that Flex Tech study is, is fine, then we can pull the RFP or just not award it or whatever. And, yeah. So I also included, you know, the Flex Tech study itself so that that could go out with the RFP. So, you know, any potential bidders could see, oh, I'm not working from scratch here, right? Does that make sense, everybody?
It makes sense. I mean, it, it's a lot of work, so thank you, Vanessa, Gary, for sort of being willing to, Karen, for being willing to like, you know, jump on sort of a project with these kinds of, you know, this is sort of putting a new definition to the speed of government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a paperwork piece that is, just like the TAP grants.
Right.
This is filled with a lot of paperwork.
Right. So one thing, I, I did not read all 139 pages of the contract, but I did try to read most of it. And I know the federal government has pretty onerous reporting standards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, in the case of the TAP grant, our engineer basically is running that paperwork, all the, all the things that the subs have to submit in terms of all that stuff. They're running all that stuff. And they're basically bundled, because they're running the, the project, they're going to bundle all this up, give it to us to take a look at, sign and move out. Do you think we can set that also up with whoever's the primary for this?
I think we would do that for the implementation phase, for the first phase, the audit phase. It's not like data's taken and stuff. It's not-
Right, right, implementation, got it, okay.
But I think that's, yeah, definitely would. And then that gets counted into their bid and accounted for, you know.
Right, right, right. Because that's the only way to handle it. We can't handle the federal reporting requirements off by ourselves.
I just also want to make a point that if we, within a year, have more than $750,000 in federal funding, we need to assume the audit.
For, for a total of 700 people?
Well, I have to look at that. I have to like, look at, number one, part of the block grant is federal, part of it's not. So I need to kind of find out what part of it's federal, what part of the block grant is federally funded and some of the other grants that we have, if any pieces of those are federally funded. And, but within our fiscal year, if it's over $750,000, we're going to do some.
Are we going to be-
Would there be ways with wastewater and water treatment plants?
They're state.
I think they're not state. I don't think they're, I have to check and see.
What's the nature of the audit that needs to be done?
It's just, it's just-
Some other requirements.
It's a threshold audit of $750,000 of federal grants.
It's a single, like, federal audit.
So for instance, our community development block grant for the mini park.
Yeah, yeah, but like, what kind of audit?
What kind of, what does that like mean?
I've never had them.
Oh, okay, great. So it's gonna be like a new fun experiment.
What is it called? I couldn't hear.
Do you want to turn your speaker on, Cameron?
I'm sorry. It's a federal single audit over $750,000. And I can get more information on it for the next meeting.
I mean, honestly, in some respects, that sounds like an amazing problem to have, but it is a good problem to know about.
That's all right. I think they all got fired.
I believe it's going to cost money.
I believe it's going to cost money, too, so.
Right.
All right, so sir, could you introduce yourself? Do you have any question, any questions, or?
I just wanted to help you understand the NYSERDA program more, that's all. Was a NYSERDA contractor, heating and air conditioning, so I do know a bit about it.
Can you, can you introduce, who are you?
Peter Johnson.
Wait, wait, come on up.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Raise your hand.
No, I just, you were going on about questions, so I didn't answer them.
Well, you were, you were on the edge of your seat, so I couldn't ignore you.
No, I was trying to stay there. So the NYSERDA program, as you know, probably, most of it ends at the end of this year. And as you already know, you have to get it started before the end of the year. Most of all, it's going away.
I think it's a different pot of money.
Yeah. For, yeah, the rehabilitation of heating, water heating, all the different programs.
The rehab program goes away.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is a good, big chunk that's been shrinking every year. It takes, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of hours, and it takes about at least a month or two to get the money back and all that stuff. As far as the equipment, that's, should be all readily available. Shouldn't take that long. It's just a matter of what you've got to install. And as part of the program, they have to do all the manual J heat loads and cooling loads. So they will, the contractors will know what to get.
We've been through that already with our other site.
Yeah, and that only takes probably a week max to get it.
What's your background on this, Dr. Espert?
Uh, I do plumbing, heating, air conditioning.
Okay, that's all.
In Rhinebeck here. Grew up in Rhinebeck. My father's Tom Johnson. He works for the village.
What? I thought we loved Tom.
Child of royalty.
Oh, my God, Tom.
Nice to meet you, finally.
Yes. So, yeah, you want to try to move on as quickly as possible. And it does take forever to get it done and get it through. But the equipment is there and it's available, so that does not take long.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
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 Me, too.
Yeah, me, you're welcome.
You're on camera now.
Wow. All right, so what do you want us to do here? Pass this resolution?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to pass the resolution. I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution for the NYSERDA grant and RFP.
Second.
Do we need to put a timeline on the RFP?
Yes.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. Right.
You said you've already written that?
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah, it's there.
So, I mean- So I mean, do we want to have a big, like, visible 30 days? I think we want to-
The issue is if we can get it before our next meeting.
Yeah.
On the 23rd, uh, we can need to talk about that a little bit. But if we could push it to the 23rd and try to get something back, we could make it a try and see what we get.
So, like, 10 days?
Well, no, we can, we can actually get it the day before.
Yeah, the 22nd.
22nd.
Would be better because I'm not here.
I know, that's, we understand that.
Okay.
I was going to bring that up, but we could-
Yeah, the 22nd?
Yeah. Give us as much time as possible.
What time?
5:00 PM? 4:00 PM? When do we close?
About 4:00.
I was like, oh, I'll stay.
Sit there with some pizza.
All right, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah.
Eleanor, second.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa. This is a lot of work.
It's amazing.
Well, fingers crossed. Yeah, I get that.
Lydia, let's talk about Crown Castle.
Um, so, uh, our cell phone tower, um, is managed by Crown Castle. Um, we currently have two contracts on it, Verizon and AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has, or Crown Castle has come to us with, um, an amendment on the AT&amp;T contract that's literally just an update of equipment. I verified that it is not a change of anything other than equipment. It's borderline, like, not understandable, uh, what I'm reading. The, the legal language is perfectly understandable, but the rest of it is not. So, um, we're going to go with Crown Castle's recommended, I would like to recommend that we go with Crown Castle's recommendation to approve this contract amendment with the update on equipment.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Lydia.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
They will be happy. They've been waiting at the door.
They have, yeah. A lot of them.
All right, the next thing, which was authorization for college courses, I am tabling that discussion pending further review.
Great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from 8:12:25.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wondered, did anybody send in any major corrections? Because my name was accidentally off the list, so I got them right.
I sent it to you twice, Lydia.
It's fine. I just was curious. Was there any discussion on the list?
No, I, they were fine.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, Karen.
Committee reports. Rick?
Okay. The tree commission has two action items. We received pruning removal applications from three Knollwood Road. And this person has a very large, lovely silver maple that has been losing some limbs. And unfortunately, trees are notorious for losing their limbs. The tree commission recommended that the tree be evaluated by a certified arborist by taking a core sample to get a sense for the overall health of the tree. And based upon that core sample, if the arborist thought it'd be possible to prune and cable that tree, they'd like to see that tree retained, if possible, because it is such a large tree. But if it's not feasible, then the board understands that the removal would be necessary. So I'd like to get a motion to accept the tree commission's recommendation for two Knollwood.
So moved. All, any discussion?
Or, wait, we didn't get a second. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion to second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The second application came from the Smoky Rock BBQ folks, and they would like to prune some trees in front of their, in front of their building along 308. The, um, uh, tree commission agreed that they should go, it should be given permission to go ahead and do that. So make a motion to accept the recommendation for Smoky Rock.
Second.
Second. These aren't the tree, these aren't part of the list that Dave's just, okay, great.
Not part of the list, no. And then just the only other item for the, um-
Wait, you made a motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the, uh, tree commission is lining up to do its, uh, fall planting. And currently, we have what looks like 22 to 23 trees to be planted at 17 different locations. We're still finalizing the, the final forms and all the other stuff, but that's what it's shaping up to be.
Hopefully, it won't be pouring. Do you have a date?
Uh, it's not on there, but I do, let me check. I don't want to get the wrong one, which is what I'm concerned with. I've got November 8th, but I'm going to double-check that date.
November 8th is a Monday. No, just kidding. Sorry, that's December.
It's a Saturday.
We, we don't need, we can do that.
But that's, that's tentative.
Not necessarily.
And also, I should say, sometimes, depending upon when the tree nursery can deliver the trees, that date has shifted occasionally from Monday to Monday.
Okay.
That's it?
Vanessa?
Okay, um, so September 21st to September 27th is Hudson Valley Climate Solutions Week. And so we're planning a couple events, the Climate Smart Task Force. One is to do a tour of our compost facility over at Ellersley Stables for Sunday, September 21st. And we also plan to do a walking school bus walk to school on September 26th. We will be tabling at the farmer's market on October 5th. So, um, come out and see us. So, uh, also wanted to mention the Duchess County Transportation Council's, um, Bike and Pedestrian Count. If, in case you see people sitting by the side of the road, like, watching people and tabulating, they're doing a Bike and Pedestrian Count, which Rick and I have been involved with over the years. So we, I think we now have all the volunteers.
Oh, they're all, yeah, okay.
And, yeah, I think, um, I wanted to also mention, we are going to be updating our resiliency planning tool, which is something we get, we get help with from Cornell Cooperative Extension. We did this in 2020, but five years later, we're going to update it. So that's a project I'll be working on. And then finally, our compost, our DEC compost grant. We need to spend all that money by the end of October and then close out that grant. We are coming in under budget, so at this point, we're just like, okay, let's make sure we're purchasing all the things that we are going to need. But, yeah, I was over at the compost site today with, um, with, with Michael and the consultant that we're working with, and it's working really great, great finished product. So we're really happy with how it's turned out.
Thank you. Eleanor?
Thompson Mazzarella Park, the fencing with netting to stop foul balls has been installed around the Little League field, and it looks pretty good. Work has started on the south end of the soccer field to create more parking. The bocce court was built, well, two courts actually, were built in record time. Thank you to Chad Kleisch, Kleisch, for his perseverance in finding a contractor. It's proving to be very popular. Two sets of bocce balls have already been donated to the Star Library. They can be checked out so people can play. The next Thompson Mazzarella Park committee meeting is actually tomorrow, which is why I don't have a lot to report from that. The next Village Parks Committee meeting is on September 15th. The Village Parks Committee is looking into how to control the tree of heaven, which is a highly invasive species. So far, I have the following recommendations. A, hire someone to cut down the trees and have the highway department keep trimming back the shoots. I've never seen that recommended, but I'm just, just, this is, you know, these are the responses. B, remove the trees. Come back in about a month to apply an herbicide, assuming we can get the proper permits. C, remove the trees in-house and hire someone to apply the herbicide, as this company does not actually remove the trees. D, kill the trees with an herbicide spray and then return later to remove the trees. And that was the only one so far that has given me an actual quote. And it came in under $10,000, which I guess kind of surprised me. I thought it would be more than that. But I'm waiting. I mean, this isn't necessarily in the budget, so we'll have to see what transpires on that. The first stage of trimming to use in the Doughboy Park has been completed. The burning bushes have been pruned down considerably, so we're giving them time to re-leaf, if there's such a word, to fill and grow back.
I was delighted to notice our, like, lovely, uh, we have lamp posts behind the burning bushes that I've literally never seen before.
I know, it's interesting.
I'm surprised.
People are commenting that when they walk their dogs, they can actually see the sidewalk in the, you know, when it's dark.
Yeah, it's nice.
Because the lights are working. So thank you for that. And then I found out something interesting. I was reading the 2003 agreement between the town and village that governs the park, the Thompson Mazzarella Park. And it was signed in 2003, and it expired in 20 years. So I guess right now, we don't have an agreement unless we have something in between. So I thought that would be something to kind of look into. I thought maybe this would be a good way to mend some fences with the town if we could just sit down and if it's true that it's expired, if we could sit down and renew our commitment to work together on this park, maybe it would be a good start for, you know, for mending our fences. And that's all that I have.
So, Eleanor, on the pollinator garden over here, I was approached by the garden club today. And I swiftly asked a question if all the parties have been contacted to do that. And they were very adamant that they have not been, nobody has reached out to them about the pollinator garden, and they're very concerned.
Did they, did have, did they vote to agree to take care of it if it's installed, or?
Well, they currently maintain that area as part of the-
No, I know, but the, there was a big, uh, there was a big dust-up because they actually weren't meeting till the beginning of, maybe they haven't met yet.
I guess the concern is, Eleanor, we need to make sure the garden service does a lot of work for us.
I agree. I just, yeah.
You need to, you need to reach out to them, because I thought you had.
No, they, I was waiting for them to let us know whether they were going to contain the, the pollinator. I'll, I'll reach out. It's fine. Yeah.
All right, because they, they need to be involved. Okay?
Who's on the garden committee?
A lot of, a lot.
A lot of people.
A lot of people, yeah.
They're billing.
That's dedicated. They maintain four, four sections of property here for us. Legion Park, the Doughboy, and other areas, and they do it-
That's great.
For free and gracious.
For free, right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, they do a nice job. I just didn't know it was on.
I would, I would like to keep them involved.
Okay, special request. Uh, first is the Halloween parade. This is an annual event sponsored by American Legion and us, the Village of Reinbeck. The parade is scheduled, it's the 39th annual Halloween parade. Step off here at the village hall, at the firehouse, and then end at, end at the American Legion.
I did confirm that she would like to keep it that way.
Pardon?
Jennifer emailed me back. She would like to keep it that way.
Right, okay, very good. Uh, the date is Sunday, October 26th.
Start time would be 3 o'clock. They agreed to change it because of concerns from the-
I see that note, yeah. So startup time is 12 to 1. Event startup time then is 3 and 4 to 5. It's great to see all these little kids. We, we escort them down East Market Street, then on Route 9 to the Legion. I don't know who gets more fun out of it, the parents or the kids, but they're all in costume, and it's a great, great event. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual, American Legion, Village of Reinbeck, 39th annual children's Halloween parade.
Discussion.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do have a peddler's permit application from Tiny House Ceramics Peddlers. So Margaret Savino, um, who lives here in, in the town, has Tiny House Ceramics. Basically, she wants to be able to have permission for Tiny House Ceramics to bend and give life hanging outside of the establishments of the Krogue, the Beakman Arms, Village Pizza, Reinbeck Wine and Liquor, and potentially others in the future.
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
There's permission from all the property owners, and I have specific dates.
And there's an envision, there's a picture of the cart that she wants to use to do this.
Yeah, she's had it in front of the hat shop.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but like, not on, not on like the sidewalk, but just like sitting in front, you know, like how that, there's like more space in front of that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not large.
No, it's not.
The only question is making sure that their PDA, you know, access is maintained.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a lovely idea, but, um, you know, oh my God, our, our streets are not wide.
This is, this is a traveling store. It's a little bit different then.
It's traveling, yeah, it's like, so how we've usually allowed for stuff like this is if it's within three feet of the front plane of the building, sure, like what we did for the chamber thing and, you know.
That's the intention.
Right, but if like, it's within the three feet of the front of the building, and then people are standing in the sidewalk looking at it, and it's just, I-
It looks to reflect from the drawing, it's 15 inches deep.
Okay.
It's not very deep.
Okay.
The issue is, we want to allow a vendor to set up shop, and that's basically what we're doing. We're since, we're allowing a vendor to set up shop at various locations around the village to be able to sell their wares. We've never have done that.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
This is a really, this is, this is really hard, yeah.
Margaret's here.
Yeah, that's right. Margaret is there.
It's smaller cart than what you-
Oh.
I, I have a, I took a picture.
Margaret, come on up and tell us about what you do. Sell this to us, Margaret. No, go, yes.
So my name is Margaret Savino. Um, I graduated from Reinbeck in 2008. Um, I'm a ceramic artist. In 2015, I built-
Want to talk more into the mic, I can put that in.
Um, in 2015, I built a tiny house, and I lived in it for about seven years. Um, it's in Statsburg, uh, and I have since turned it into a little tiny ceramic store. So I have been over at Dana's Hat Shop, um, but I also have a relationship with, as, as you've mentioned, the Krogue and Village Pizza and the Beakman Arms, um, to potentially be at their establishments. Again, it is a really narrow, um, cart, uh, and I, I'm a painter. Um, so I thought that by live painting, it would just be something interesting for people to see. I know that you don't, you've never done it before, um, but I do have ceramics in a bunch of the stores already. And, um, I wouldn't be competing with what I'm already selling in, in the stores. But I do make things that are, uh, from Reinbeck and that are great for gifts and for tourists and stuff. And, um, and I push it in and I push it out. And I would only be there for a few hours during the day. And, um, uh, as Martina mentioned, I do have dates with, um, the establishments that I would, you know, speak with them and communicate as much as possible with everybody. And if a certain day doesn't work, you know, I can always switch it. But it's to get my name out there as an artist, and it's really hard when you don't have a store. So I do have a traveling store, so it's kind of working with what I've got, so.
Well, I mean, it's interesting, because, you know, Reinbeck Wine and Liquor, if you have permission from Joe, like, you could be sort of in the little grassy area next to it, right?
Yeah.
My concern, I mean, I've seen, I've seen your little shop in front of the house. Store is lovely.
I actually had, um, the one that you're referring to is slightly bigger.
Okay.
Um, so the one that I would be bringing is, is actually smaller.
I, I totally believe you.
Okay.
And the, it, it's, it's more just like a practical consideration of our, our sidewalks are already narrow.
I understand, yeah.
Um, and so, you know, we've been, this has been a conversation basically since after our dining with COVID.
I understand, yeah.
How, how much stuff do we allow to occupy our sidewalks? And it gets really, um, tight when you're, when there's a tree well as well. So, a tree, a tree well as well. So, um, you know, my, like, the, sorry, um, the Beakman Arms, the Krogue, which is a little off the beaten path, you know, Reinbeck Wine and Liquor, you know, there's ways for you to sort of like hide, not quite, not hide, because the point is not to hide, but like, but not quite beyond the six feet of, of, um, of sidewalk that we have.
I have spoken with Corinne specifically about the Beakman Arms.
Yeah.
She mentioned by the grassy area.
Yeah.
Um, that's like away from- Um, that's like away from the, uh, tables and stuff, but...
Right, like on the grassy area, yeah.
And we have no control, if you, if they allow you to be on the grass, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not for us to...
I just wanna be able to potentially, I'm sorry?
Well, the Crowe is... No, the Crowe is different, I mean...
Not really, no.
Well, they have that sidewalk space.
But it's not, it's not ours.
But it's ours, it's not ours to regulate.
Yeah.
It's ours to regulate.
I do have a relationship with Winter Sun Summer Moon as well, and I know that Leela has, uh, been concerned about permit, permitting, permitting.
Right.
That's why I wanted to do this. Uh, they have two benches, uh, in front of, well, four, but two in, in front of one of the main stores there. Um, and, uh, if, if the bench was moved to the opposite side, I could be pushed up against the wall there, potentially. That was another thought, and I know that is right in the village, so...
So, I mean, I, I'm sort of over the idea that we should try things to see...
Yeah, no, well, that's sort of where I was talking about this, yeah.
And then, but maybe what we really need to stipulate is to make sure that there's at least a four foot, that wherever you set up, there's gonna have to be a four foot clearance.
Right.
Including your cart, and if you're gonna be standing in front of it, so, you know, it's a...
I would be to the side painting with the easel, but yes, yes, I would be.
But in other words, we just have to make sure, because it is important that we maintain, you know, clearance and that people who have special needs are able to get through. So I'd like to see if we can at least say, you know, given, given a stipulation that you have to maintain a certain width, that...
Right.
It's similar to what we, what we do for the, you know, the chambers of commerce, just the sidewalk sale.
I would, I would say we need to apply the same rules that we use for the chambers of stores, that you can't exceed more than three feet out from the front facade of the building.
Okay.
Right, to do that.
And, you know, I can also dig up and share with you via Martina, like, the drawings that we have for the current outdoor dining permits.
Cause I know, like, I, I partially work at the Crowe and, through the art version.
Yeah.
I know Dave was having a lot of trouble during that time, like, that's why they had to build that extra space.
Yeah, yeah.
So I could be like inside of that space if it's needed.
Well, that would be, so like, the Crowe, yes, that sounds great. Really, the only one that I'm worried about on this current list is Village Pizza, because it's the only one that doesn't have, like, a...
A lot of space.
A lot of space, and it has a really large tree well in front of it, and also has a couple benches in front of it.
So does Wine and Liquor have a large tree well.
Right, but Wine and Liquor, you can sort of like...
If you combine it into the Crowe and use that grass space.
Yeah, exactly.
And not in front of their store.
Okay. Are you saying more in front of Seoul in the hearing, or?
No, just sort of like, there's like those, the minute that you get past the front plane, like, on the other side of the front plane of the building, that's not our space to regulate.
Okay.
Um, that's all regu, that's all Joe's space, and it's all privately owned.
Okay.
Um, so, the, the concern is blocking the public sidewalk, like, that's...
And I definitely don't wanna do that.
Yeah, um, so we can make sure that you sort of see, like, the drawings that we have, like, you need to have this much space in front of a tree well, you need to have this much space if you're not in front of a tree well, just, um, you know, for ADA and strollers and dogs and humans and all the things that use our, use our sidewalks. So I would be inclined to, um, grant this, I personally would be inclined to grant this public permit with all of those kind of stipulations attached to it. And, you know, maybe for the moment, we skip Village Pizza and we sort of see how it goes.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, I don't, like...
How, how long, what were your, I don't have the dates in front of you.
Um, shoot, I, I'm sorry, I should have brought them. But for example, for Corinne at Beakman Arms, I know that Porch Fest is coming up on this week, uh, this weekend.
Yeah.
Um, so I was planning on going over there this weekend, um, for a few hours. And again, it would be like midday, um, I, I'm a personal trainer, and I sometimes...
I have their dates.
Oh, okay.
9:13, 9:14, 9:21, and 9:28. And then I have dates in October, uh, for the Crowe, that was for Beakman Arms.
Okay.
So, um, I would be in town, like, around like 1:00 noon, 1:00, something like that, like, sort of midday, till like maybe 4:00 or 5:00, something like that. Um, I might be earlier, but I would definitely stay within any regulations needed.
And she schedules future ones, because our permit, her, this peddler's permit would last for the next year.
Okay.
She will give them to me in advance.
Okay. Great.
Just give it a shot.
Yeah, give it a shot, I'm gonna check out your work.
Thank you. It's Tiny House Ceramics.
Yeah, I have a motion to accept this minus Village, well, well, we can include Village Pizza on it if we're gonna put all these stipulations together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, um, I have a motion to accept this, but with all, all of the, you know, the three foot within the front lane of the building, we'll send you some drawings so you know exactly what we're talking about. And making sure that there's at least four feet of, um, through, freeway, if the lack of a better way to put it, including when people are actually stopping to look at your stuff. So like, you know, you just need to be a little careful about that.
Okay. Um, does that include, that does not include the Beakman Arms though, is that right?
If you're on somebody's grass...
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, it's only when you're on, on the public sidewalks. So, you know, Beakman's grass, Crowe.
Okay, just wanted to...
The area next to Wine and Liquor.
Okay.
Knock yourself out. So really, the only one on this current list is, um, Village Pizza.
Okay.
Or Winter Sun Summer Moon.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
A second.
Thank you so much.
I need a second.
All right, we'll give this a second.
Good luck!
Thank you!
All right, I'd like, um, make a motion to approve the vacation buyout request for employee number 33 for 70 hours.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, now for the best part of the meeting, it's the anniversaries. Uh, our village staff who worked so hard, so diligently, uh, and with September being the Labor Day month, which recognizes our workers throughout the country. Our chief water plant operator, Brian Alex, 12 years. Congratulations, Brian, we're glad to have you. Uh, and our highway mechanic, Scott Mechanic, Scott Men, excuse me, Scott Men. Drum roll please, 30 years with, with our highway department. Congratulations, Scott, glad you're here. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 7:58.
Seconds.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.